I'm here.
Yay. Awesome.
How you doing there? Where'd you move up this way?
Uh, fourteen years ago.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Zarzaki, can the police car roll?
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Ms. Chick?
Here.
Zarzaki present.
Mr. Kuzno?
Here.
Mr. Quinto?
Here.
Ms. Infante is absent with notice, and Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you. I make a motion we approve the agenda. Support by Ms. Chick, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Call to the public, anyone wishing to address the planning commission may do so for three minutes. Seeing none, move on. No clarifications, since there's no call, no one spoke, so. Correspondence, everyone received the correspondence in the packet is regarding last month's meeting. Anything else, Ms. Byrd, since? No, thank you. There's no public hearings tonight, we'll go to reports of committees, board of trustees, Ms. Chick.
The Board of Trustees met May 22nd, the Board approved the civic event application for the Fourth of July parade, also the road closure resolution for the Fourth of July parade, the parade will be on Wednesday, July 4th. The Board approved a request from Lee Maltbisch to continue leasing the property behind the fire station number two, which he has farmed for several years. The Board also approved the purchase of eleven foreclosed summer homes and wetland parcels from the county. The Board approved continuation of our auditor contract agreement with Hannaford Pepper. Bark Park rules and recreation regulations were discussed, the Board is aware the PC is working on these. Our code informant officer has submitted her resignation due to a threatening incidents with a resident. The township will be looking at options for enforcement, including advertising for a replacement or having the police department get involved. And finally, the Board will have continued discussion on issues surrounding township-owned recreation areas and facilities, uses, amenities, funding, and maintenance, and that's all.
Thank you. ZBA report, Mr. Kuzno.
ZBA did meet prior to this meeting. The proposal was approved for a Sutton School, it's called, over on Joy Road. It was a, a, looking for relief on some setbacks on it.
Thank you. Staff report, Ms. Byrd, anything? Thank you. Planning consultant, Mr. Lippens.
I guess by way of update, I'd say I did have a conversation with the township manager about the regulations for bark parks, and at this time, I was directed that he was still having conversations with the Director of Public Safety, or the Police Chief, or Police and Fire Chief, about the issue, but I'll keep circling back and discuss it, but I've got no report on that time other than we initiated the conversation.
Ms. Chick, have a question.
So you're still going to get some information for us, like something you'd rather ask to look at?
Um, I can do that, but I believe the motion was for me to work with the township manager to assign me that, so I'm happy to have direction from Planning Commission if you want me to work on that, but I think he also has to approve my work plan, too.
Mr. Equinell.
I do not want this to stall.
Right.
Because of the township manager, so I guess if we as a PC can give you another direction, if it's a recommendation of the Board, because again, it could stall forever and we're going to have issue after issue, especially this summer and fall, and I'd like to be able to help residents have assistance in dealing with these issues.
Ms. Chick.
I agree.
Okay. Parks and Recs report, Mr. Equinell.
Yes, our next meeting will be on the 21st of June, here in this building. We will be working on continuation of the community garden. If anyone would like a spot, there are still, I believe, two spots left, so you can call Jennifer Carlel at the Township Office, and she can forward that on to the individual that's handling that on behalf of the Parks and Rec. And then, the Bark Park is again, open for community use, please follow the rules that are posted there in front, and we also are one of the finalists for a Streetscape grant through the, through the Wayne County, and we have a committee working on that, and hopefully, we will find out by August 1st if we were, are one of the recipients, thank you.
Thank you. Downtown Planning Group report, there is none since Ms. Infante is absent. Item 10, there's no unfinished business, so we go to 11, new business. Item A, to recommend, to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of the Northfield Township Library to add a 1,200 square foot pavilion. Is there a representative here for the library pavilion?
I am Chris Childs, Charlie Johnny Miller's.
I'm sorry, what was your last name, Chris?
Childs, C-H-I-L-D-S.
Thank you. Yes, Chris, if you'd like to give us a synopsis on the plan, and then we will go to the planning consultant and engineer reports.
I was approached by the Board to build a 1,200 square foot, single-story pavilion to give community access for concerts and other activities. We're not going to be changing the footprint or anything else of the property. We're going to be working where there was an existing structure that was demolished years earlier, where the land has been sitting kind of at limbo, needing some updating anyways. It is going to match the look of the existing building, trying to give it, as you can see if you guys do have the plans, we're going to try to match the roof lines and try to match, you know, to keep it the historical look that the library has. There was some questions and concerns that my great architect took care of last minute when we did get the OHM, so we were able to get quite a few of those already reconciled by the end of the day-to-day. So we do have an updated print, correct, if anybody needs it, would like to look at it.
Is that regarding the engineer details?
Uh, yes.
More or less?
Yes, more or less.
Okay.
And one of the other big concerns was, there was a, we had two options originally, for, one was for future use, for a five-foot sidewalk leading up to the building, and the other one was to go to the parking lot. The one leading up to the building, we have eliminated that at this time, so just due to monetary restrictions.
Okay.
So that was one that was under concern for the wetlands and the rain gardens, so that has been eliminated now.
Okay, and after we go through the engineering report, he can, we can pretty much touch upon any of the updates that you received at this, you know, this time today, so.
Perfect.
Sound good?
Sounds great.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Mr. Kuzno.
The one that you're eliminating is on the west side that leads toward the door of the?
Correct, I think it's currently where the dumpsters are.
I don't know where the dumpsters are. Oh, no. It's the one that goes between, between the rain garden and the, okay.
Between the gardens there, where it does have the green water.
Yep, gotcha.
Yep.
That's still shown on the plan that you sent today.
Correct.
Okay.
We're doing our best when we get the, you know, like yesterday afternoon is when we saw it come through, so.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, if you could remain at the podium, and then if we have questions or concerns.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Lippens, would you like to give your report?
Yeah, I guess I'd start, I think this is a great project, I think the pavilion will be a benefit to the library and Northfield Township patrons. You know, the library is a beautiful site, its landscape, there's good access to the street, so we really wanted to review this based on the existing conditions and with practical application of zoning code. Our initial review, which was dated May 24, I raised a few questions that really were details that I had questions, wanted to see addressed on the plan, and then after your first packet went out, I believe Mary sent a revised letter from me dated June 1st, that did show all of those issues were addressed. So at this time tonight, we were recommending approval, and ours was subject to, you know, that there was enough detail for engineering approval, and I think that most of those issues have been addressed, but I'll let your engineer discuss that a little bit.
Thank you.
I would say, just quickly, I don't have an objection to them removing that sidewalk, but if we, if that is the intent, I think that that should be a condition, that the revised plan shows that.
Yep. Absolutely.
Okay, I'll go to the OHM report, Mr. Cavallaro.
We have a letter dated May 31st, 2018, we have comments on water sewer, paving, and then drainage. I think I saw an email today, we have a comment that the sewer, we just want to make sure it's not underneath the, in the water, not underneath the new pavilion or the sidewalk, and I think I saw an email today that they located the well, but the sewer they're not sure of, but they believe it goes out to Barker Road. That's probably the case, but we just want to make sure that that's not impacted. We have a comment about some existing spot grades in the area of the sidewalk, if they get rid of the sidewalk on the side that they're talking about, probably everything's, that's where the issues that were in that area. And then we have five comments on drainage, and all of those are mostly related to that same sidewalk that they're talking about eliminating now. So based on that, they have a couple of outside agency approvals before they can start construction, but we would want to see those revisions, but would be fine with the plan.
Thank you. So at this time, then, just a quick follow-up, Mr. Cavallaro, everything, everything is up to par on the revision?
Yeah, we just want a couple confirmations that everything that we've said here is handled, you know, as they've talked about tonight.
Okay. Okay, so we'll open it up for any further questions, but my only, Mr. Childs is, so removal of the west sidewalk, that'll be part of the condition tonight, is there any other updates that you received that we should discuss?
No, we just went in accordance with what the suggestions were, so we did, but mainly eliminating that sidewalk kind of made a little bit of, you know, and we did get some, we did get some plot points put on there on the new drawing.
Okay.
So, and then we also, I spoke with Mary Byrd earlier today, we are going to get a hold of the, about the sewer issue, because there was nothing as far as, no details anywhere stating it, so we were going to talk. I'm going to beg Mary for help to help me locate that, she's pretty good with that so far.
Okay.
Is there a basement in that building, in the existing library? So you can probably just go in the basement and look where it goes out the building, it's going out towards the opposite direction, we're safe.
Yeah.
Is there any further questions by the commission? Mr. Dwyer.
Are there any conditions of use? And are we to consider conditions of use?
Mr. Lippens?
It's not a special land use, so if you mean place conditions on the approval, like it could only be used till 10:00 PM.
Right.
That would typically be the type of thing that you would attach to a special land use approval, not a site plan approval, but you could certainly ask the applicant if they intend to have hours associated with the use.
Okay, so my follow-up question being that the builder, I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
Chris.
Chris said it was going to be used for concerts and such, so what's to stop me getting a keg and a rock band Saturday night and celebrating my birthday next door to that residential property?
Let's do it.
Royden Paul's letter dated on the 24th of May, it states right in there that it will have to, accessory buildings are permitted within the use of following the guidelines of the Whitmore Lake District, so.
Okay.
Where can we get keggers and have parties at, and I'm in.
So does, what does that exclude, and what does it include, does anyone know?
So, I mean, I would say that we do have some representatives from the library here, too. Let's ask them.
Would anyone care to?
How do you want to use the?
Yeah, would anyone care to step up to the podium to answer Mr. Dwyer's question? Just please state your name.
Sure, Margaret Neblock, I'm the Board President for the library.
Thank you.
So specific uses would be any programming that are at the library, summer reading club, they do have concerts scheduled this summer, but they're not, you know, 12:30 at night, especially considering the neighbors, it's more like, you know, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, you know, we're having community picnics this summer, too, so those kind of activities would be included in that area. As the Board, we can probably talk about other uses or kind of a timeframe if people want to use the space within a specific time period, as long as it doesn't interfere with other library programs.
Will people have to get permission generally from the library to use it?
I think that's something we have to discuss as a Board, since we don't have a current structure, we have to kind of develop those policies.
Would it be reasonable to assume that it generally would be open during library hours?
That would be a reasonable assumption.
And what are your library hours?
They are 10 to 8, Monday through Thursday, Saturday 11 to 3, closed on Sunday.
Would you rent it to an outside party for after-hours, given that libraries aren't particularly well-funded?
Speak right into your microphone.
We don't have an official rental policy because we can't take in money.
Okay.
As a 501(c)(3), so there's like a form you'd fill out, possibly a cleaning fee which would be refunded at the end of the event, but other than that, there's no other fees.
Mr. Equinell.
I, as one commissioner, not in favor of putting any extra conditions on them for use, other than what is part of the noise ordinance restrictions within the township, you know, in the residential areas, et cetera, so, you know, again, as long as they follow the guidelines that are set forward there, I am a happy commissioner, thank you.
Yeah, I would reflect the same sentiment. Ms. Chick, did you have a comment?
I don't, I agree. I just want to make, if you could speak right into your microphone. Sure. I'm a tall person, it's a problem. We can't hear you at home that are listening to me, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any, any other questions? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve with conditions, the Whitmore Lake Library gazebo with the condition that the revised plan show the removal of the west sidewalk and any necessary information as per OHM's May 31st report.
Support.
Support by Mr. Equinell, any questions on the motion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante is again absent with notice, and Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Passes by six.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, guys.
Yes. So moving on, we'll go to new business B, which is review of the technical memo we received in the packet, and we will turn it to Mr. Lippens.
All right, we discussed at the last meeting that we would be wrapping up the technical analysis of the zoning ordinance, so this process involved going through the ordinance and noting things that Planning Commission had discussed, or that had been brought up by building or zoning, that were deficiencies in the zoning ordinance, and making a list of the things that we think should be addressed that was a little bit more comprehensive than where we started. Essentially, we wanted to make sure we did an analysis of the entire ordinance as part of this process. So this memo is really intended to be, and capture the work plan, what we think any other issues are besides the ones we've already discussed, and it also includes the ones we've already discussed. So it's organized into sections, one is about clarity, simplicity of use, general formatting or section organization, things that could happen that would help improve the usability. There is a section on definitions, so we looked closely at the definitions and recommended a series of changes to the definitions. There's a section on administrative procedures and standards, which include revising site plan review standards, ZBA, and different enforcement violations and penalties. We also, there's a section on development standards for specific land use, these would be things that are related to special land use approvals. There's some organizational things here, but also recommendations to revise standards. And then we've got a section on supplemental regulations and standards, these are things like recently, we've talked about the natural features preservation ordinance, making sure that's updated and that it's consistent with current state guidelines, we're recommending that be combined with landscaping, also pulling your fencing and lighting sections together so that they're, those are, regulations are all in one place, expanding on temporary uses and structures, looking at vision clearance, and then making some revisions to the open space development option and site condominium option in the ordinance, and we've suggested adding a section on alternative energy. We've also want to look at off-street parking and loading, and we've made some comments at prior Planning Commission meetings about addressing non-conformity regulations, and then there's a section on changes to each individual district, looking specifically at some issues with agricultural district, multifamily residential, manufactured housing, the Whitmore Lake districts, the WLD districts, and the North Territorial Overlay District, as well as the industrial. And there is a example at the end of single-page zoning district, which would be, the recommendation would be to consolidate each of your zoning district regulations into one-page document. So everyone's had this, I wanted to kind of provide a brief overview of the structure of the document and possibly take questions, or even discuss an opportunity possibly for Planning Commission to provide even written comments on this memo, if you want to go in that direction. The goal here is to use this memo really to guide the ordinance review, and we want to make sure that your ideas are in the memo before we proceed with making revisions.
So for tonight's purpose, Mr. Lippens, this is, this is going to guide our overall review, if for some reason we don't have some, or we find that there's something after this occasion that we would like to address, we can certainly look at it, though?
Of course we can, right, but what we want to do is, is use this technical memo to guide the process, right, we want to say, we've looked at it, we've raised these issues, these are the primary issues that we want to address in this zoning ordinance update.
Thank you. Ms. Chick.
So when we initially set our goals, we had a list of urgent ones, we've made it through the urgent issues right now, or already, or?
Yes.
This is our next step, okay, so the goal, we'd be starting like from page three, and then working our way through the memo, or is there some order that you think needs more attention than others?
That's fine, if you want to go page by page, if there are commissioners that have comments on each page, we can, we can do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Equinell.
I really like the single-page zoning districts, if we could get to that simplicity, I think it's in individuals' best interest, I like the concisment of that, and yeah, to me, wherever we start, as long as it's in a logical order, as we have followed thus far, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments, questions? So, Mr. Lippens, I mean, I read through most of, all of the, of this review, for simplicity at this meeting, what do you suggest that we start at the top, and go try to accomplish as much as possible, or what do you suggest?
I think it would be my suggestion if, if we take individual comments, but well, maybe what we could do is go page by page and just say, does anyone have a comment on this page, so that?
I think we should do it that way.
So, yeah, the body of the memo starts on page three with the introduction, and then the section on clarity and simplicity of use, which includes hyperlinks, land use table, and zoning district summaries. Were there any comments on this section?
Ms. Chick.
On the hyperlinks and cross-references, we've always had a problem with when we change something, create a new ordinance, or amend an ordinance, that it doesn't get added to the manual quickly enough, so by doing, doing the hyperlinks and the cross-references, as soon as we get an approval from the Board on something that we've recommended to them, that is something that you would do, is add it to it electronically, so it's available the next day.
In the development manual?
In the, in hyperlinks and cross-references, in the zoning ordinances.
I think what Ms. Chick is, go ahead, now.
I'm asking if, when we do the amendments or the recommendations of ordinances, or create a new ordinance, is it going to be changed immediately when you're talking about doing hyperlinks and cross-references, so that when it's approved by the Board, that it's available, well, quickly, as opposed to we have to wait and wait and wait for it to get printed somewhere?
I also have a similar comment to that, is that what's available online is the MUNI code, which we find is not updated enough, near enough, basically once a year, am I correct, Ms. Byrd? Once, maybe twice on the year, so how will the actuality of having these hyperlinks work as we are moving along the system? as we are moving along the system? The process? In other words, to the general public, the MUNI code is by far dated.
Right.
So I think, is that more along the lines which you were referring to? Ms. Chick?
That's what it sounded like to me.
Okay. Because I had the same question.
Right. So the MUNI code will need to be updated. And that's not something that, that we would do. The township would send the revised code to MUNI code. And it would be updated on MUNI code as, you know, quickly as it can be done. The, but if we in the, the Word document or the zoning ordinance that the township keeps, do the hyperlinks, those will go into MUNI code when it's updated.
So my concern is that if somebody comes to the township and they want to do something, and we're giving them old information when we've already passed something that's changed, at what point do we have that available to the people that are asking the questions? That's, how do we get that done quickly?
That's handled with Jennifer. And I don't know.
But do we, do we have the capability of doing that?
I believe you can, but there's a fee. So I think it's a price that causes the township not to do this often.
Oh, yeah. I would recommend, we're done with this process, that we, we update the MUNI code and do it as quickly as possible. There'll be enough changes that we're doing that it would be, there would be value to the township in doing it at that time.
All right. You know, just as a, an example, in the past year, we have made many updates that I believe some already went through the process with the Board of Trustees and are yet to be seen on the MUNI code. So administratively, it's something that's going to have to be worked out. Obviously, the Planning Commission would, would desire that. But in reality, it may not come to fruition unless the funds are authorized to do such updates as the township sees fit. Ms. Chick?
So, but I'm thinking if we have the hard copy in the office somewhere and somebody's asking a question, check MUNI code and then check to see if there's, how's that happen?
For my own book?
Yeah.
I will attach the results.
Okay. Thank you.
And for substantive, substantial plans or developments, obviously, they're going to be addressed with Mr. Lippens or someone from McKenna. So they will also have the most recent. But as far as some of the, possibly some minor questions or so forth, I think that's more what you're referring to. But, okay. So it's a great, I like the concept. If we can get it to work quickly, that would be great. So, okay. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Lippens?
All right. So that was section one. Section two is general definitions. So what we want to do is update the generation, the general definitions to make sure they're consistent with current uses up to date. Does anyone have any questions about these suggestions for definitions?
I just have a com, well, sort of a question or a comment. And even tonight, the term special land use is used often. And I don't think our current ordinance defines that. Could you, I think it should be somehow addressed in here if it's going to be used as a, a clear term. A lot of times, it's used in reference to something saying special land use. And I know it was used tonight. So can you comment on it, Mr. Lippens?
Yeah. So we actually call it conditional use, which the State Planning Act calls them special land uses. We could, by way of definition, make a definition of special land use and refer to conditional uses. You know, or we could, we could change the terminology in the zoning ordinance.
Well, what would, what would make more, I mean, I would follow, I would tend that, I would think we should follow the lead of the, what the state recognizes. Am I correct?
Yeah. I think that's a good suggestion.
Okay. So if that could possibly be done. Any other commissioners have any comments on that or other definitions? Definitions are difficult one. I mean, as we go, some things may come along. Actually, in the last two months, when we were reviewing the, the holiday set, yes, the holiday sales, we, you know, we have a term come up some, so it's something that, you know, should constantly be recognized if we can try to get those updated. No other questions on definitions?
The next section is administrative procedures and standards. We have section on site plan review, a section on board zoning, Board of Zoning Appeals, section on enforcement, and a section on the purpose, title, purpose, legal clauses pieces.
Many, so some of these, like such as the title purposes and legal clauses are to make sure that our existing language is in compliance with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. I see, obviously, that's going to reflect in probably most of the topics that we discuss or update. So I didn't have any other issues on the administrative procedure. Although that, that in itself is, are one of the pri, are primary prominent items for us to discuss and to hopefully move something forward to the Board of Trustees. And it was on our lists prior. And perhaps that should be one of the top, most topics. Any other commissioners have a comment or question on that? Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I don't need the sir, but that's okay.
Okay. The next section is standards for specific land uses. So I think we're suggesting consolidating and organizing these so that these appear in order and kind of all in the same section. As you can see, there's, there's a number of these as well. So, and during this process of consolidating, I think if we find any standards that should be changed, we'll recommend that either new standards or remove old standards for these, these uses.
So, so you're going to, just as a clarification, you're going to identify these bullet points as their own standards? Am I correct in that?
Yes. These would be headings under your development standards section.
So each, each will have its own definition and requirements? Not definition, but requirements?
Yeah.
I think that's, it's very good. I mean, there are many things that are scattered throughout the ordinance, so.
The next section is general provisions. There's a number of changes here. So possibly splitting up the general provisions into multiple chapters. Making some updates to the name of your manufactured housing district. These are, general provisions includes kind of a lot of the basic regulations in the zoning ordinance that kind of apply to everything. So there's no real theme. I guess I could read through all of these bullets. Or I'll take comments on them.
Speaking of manufacturing, manufactured homes, Mr. Lippens, I don't, I don't believe our current ordinance has that. And I think it's one of the items in the, in the definitions.
It could, it could be an error. I'm going to make a note of it.
If you could check.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. No further comments on this section. The next section is supplemental regulations and standards. So we're recommending a new chapter heading for outdoor storage and display, a new chapter heading for environmental regulations, and new chapter heading for landscaping and natural features preservation, and a new chapter heading for fencing and lighting, and new chapter heading for temporary uses and structures, modifications to the vision clearance, new chapter heading for open space development, private roads, driveways, site condominiums, and alternative energy. So... These are standards that could apply to any development, whether permitted by right or as a special land use. And I think breaking out some of these things into their own sections and revising the standards will just add to the usability of the document as well. Questions on this?
No. My only comment is I'm hoping that the, when these are established, that appropriate references to these will be established in each zoning district.
Okay. I'll make a note of that. All right. Moving right along. Other articles. Okay. So some changes in here recommended to off-street parking and loading. We've noted that the signs that we started working on last fall had been being reviewed by the township attorney. And I think that those will be ready to pull forward as we go through this project, too. There's a few questions that we haven't answered yet. But we want to bring those back. And nonconformities. The one thing we discussed in some detail at a previous Planning Commission meeting was possibly creating a Type A and Type B nonconforming use status with standards for permitting improvement of nonconforming uses. So questions on any of these three articles?
No.
All right. And finally, we've got some section here on changes to specific zoning districts, reviewing permitted conditional uses or making sure that the uses are appropriate and as they are clear and as intended in the districts. With, I think, a good focus on the North Territorial Overlay District and the Whitmore Lake districts, the WLD districts.
Have a question.
Mm-hmm.
On your agricultural district that considered consulting with the Farmland Natural Areas Preservation Committee. And I know we touched upon that before. Can you give more of a clear operational view of how that would work?
I think we could, we could ask for a report at Planning Commission. Or you could ask me to meet with them. Those are two suggestions.
Yeah. I would, I would view it as that, that the Planning Commission could request a report from the Farmland Natural Areas Preservation Committee in making a decision in the presence of the Planning Commission, not just on their own with the consultant or whoever.
Yeah. What, it would, that would be the first suggestion I made, would be to ask them to come to Planning Commission. If you asked me to meet with them, it would be to get information gathering to bring back to you.
Right. Ms. Chick?
I think I was, I backed up a little bit. Not on the subject. I'll ask when you're done.
I'm done.
Okay. All right. What is, you have pop-up retail. What is considered a pop-up retail?
That's something that we discussed at a previous meeting. And I don't have a recommendation ready on it. But essentially, what that is, is would allow businesses to get into existing spaces for temporary, short-term permits while they get all of the, the rest of the details together that they would need for official approval. So it might be a 30- or 60-day test. Oftentimes, this would allow someone to test out a business plan even before they maybe were sure that it would work in the long term.
Huh. And also, consider permitting food trucks and vendors. I thought we had a food truck and vendor ordinance.
We do.
We do. Yeah. For the Whitmore Lake District.
That, that's probably a mistake that I made, then.
Okay.
It may, it's possible it may have not been updated, to be honest.
That was two years ago.
Yeah.
Right?
But I do recall separate conversation on that topic. And I don't know if it was incorporated or what happened to it, so.
We had, we had very specific rules, dimensions, and all kinds of-
Yeah.
You may not be mistaken, Mr. Lippens. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Well, either way, I'll sort it out. I've got to note that it's there.
Thank you.
So I guess that's kind of the, the end of the memo as I presented. I think there... I think it would be an appropriate conversation, too, if there's anything on, any Planning Commissioners' minds that aren't in here. commissioners' minds that aren't in here. What I would do is I would make some revisions based on our conversation tonight, and then try to present this at the next planning commission meeting as kind of our final technical memo. And would happily add things that maybe weren't covered, but we did try to be comprehensive and include not just everything we've talked about, but additional, additional items. And certainly, I could take comments by email after the meeting if they come up. I know, like, I've had several conversations with Ms. Byrd about things, and hopefully those are in there, but if they're not, I can get those in as well. Zoning Administrator didn't look at this, so...
So she may have additions also?
No, I think I have those.
You have?
She, the zoning administrator reviewed this prior to me sending it.
Okay. Yeah, so it's, it's very comprehensive, and, in other words, and the commissioners, I know myself will benefit from looking at this another, by the next meeting.
Yeah.
There was a lot in here, and if you were to actually sit and cross-reference things, receiving the packet on Thursday or Friday is not near enough time, but don't wait too long. If anyone, I think that's what Mr. Lippens is reflecting. If there's something that somebody can think of, now's the time. By the next meeting, we would like to have it inclusive, included, so that we don't, you know, go forward and then have to go back. So we have homework to do.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Chick?
I just have a comment. I really like this single-page zoning district. It makes things so much easier for everybody.
Very.
You've got your information right there, and I think it'll make life easier. Thank you for doing that.
Mr. Kuzno.
I just had a quick, this question, I guess. This, what you just produced for us here, was that part of what we were expecting from when we got this whole process started? Is this like one of the milestones along the way, or is this a whole new direction that we're going in?
This is a milestone. This is the, the technical audit, which was part of that process.
Okay, so as far as whatever budget was allocated to this process, we're still on the same track?
Yes. We're, we're moving along, yes, on the same track. I'm happy that we were able to get a handful of amendments out pretty early. This is kind of guiding the rest of the process.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, so we will look at this another till the next meeting, in which time, hopefully, if there's any additions, we will get them to you, or bring them to that meeting. Are you, are you, are you looking to get any possible additions by the next meeting, or at the next meeting?
Um, you know, if, if anyone could send them to me in the next week or so?
Prior to?
I could get them in a revised memo, but we can talk about them at the next meeting as well.
Okay, very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a big undertaking, really. Okay, so we'll move on to new business C, correspondence discussion. I asked at the last meeting to have this, this item put on as new business. I would like to get the commissioners' thoughts or ideas on how we should proceed. Basically, with technology the way it is, you can get a text, you can get an email, you can get numerous other things at pretty much the 11th hour of a meeting, and I would like to basically get a clarification from the commissioner so that Ms. Byrd or others, and even the public, know what to expect, to have an opinion heard or discussed at a, at a upcoming meeting. So I'd like to hear some input. Mr. Iquenno?
Yes. I guess in perspective to, as an example, the discussion we had for the library today. There was, you know, new information that came out since our packet, because they updated, because they didn't get the report in time to be able to address it prior to the packet. And I guess in instances like that, I would hate to slow the process down if indeed the information could be given to us and we're able to digest it as we were tonight, to see that we were able to approve with conditions that site plan, or, you know, or that approval of that. So, you know, it's, but again, I know it depends on the amount of information that's given to us to be able to digest, because you can't do that, we can't do that in all situations, right? So I guess it's a catch-22 in my thought.
Yeah, that's, that's been typical on most items that come to the planning commission for a site plan review or other things, but obviously, we want to be accommodating to applicants and, and not be a hindrance in their process, but there has to be a realistic outlook on what is provided or what's to be expected. And I think we've, we've, in the past couple of years, have been pretty clear about that, with a lot of items that were, would be outstanding in a report, and although the, the meeting may be scheduled, and they're supposed to address many things, if, if we're not clear on it, I think definitely we need to take the time to make sure that we have all those answers and corrections in place. But I'm also referring to public, public comment, public texts, or public, or emails from the public to the commission, or other people. In all fairness, it's, it's very difficult for Ms. Byrd to receive a late correspondence, and then she does her best effort to make sure that the planning commission has comments, or, or an opinion, or something from, from a person. And, but I guess I would like to clarify, like, if we were to have some sort of cutoff prior to the meeting, like, I would say, like, usually, the, the packet goes out, the public's able to view it on the website, Thursday, Friday. Like, if it was end of business day, Monday, for Ms., for Mrs., Ms. Byrd's perspective, I think that would be reasonable, for us to consider, or at least have that included in our packet, or as an, an extra email from the township to the commissioners, so that we could, we could hear all views, and, which may, may impact the decision that, that we're looking at. So, Ms. Chick?
My thought is that the, the most time that you give the commissioners to get an email or information, a letter, whatever, the better it is, because some of us might not get it in time. If we get it at the last minute, we don't always get to check our email, we don't always get to check phone messages at home, and Mary might not have access to everything before she gets to this meeting, too. So I think we do need, I mean, I appreciate that the correspondence that we had, that was actually intended for last meeting, was in this meeting packet. It was after the fact, but we did get it. Didn't, I didn't get it before the meeting, so it's, it's really hard. You do have to have a cutoff date at some point, if anybody wants to expect that information to get to the planning commissioners, all the planning commissions, before the meeting.
Yes. Mr. Iquenno?
I do like your suggestion of, say, close of business on Monday for the township. That way, the residents do have time over the weekend to review from the packet that is put out, and then they could submit correspondence up through the end of business on Monday. That way, the office is not stretched trying to include things Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yep. Mr. Zarzaki, any comment?
No, I agree with this. Monday termination is the best. Will give us what time we hopefully have to be able to review everything. And again, make Ms. Byrd's life a little bit less complicated, trying to get
Yep.
every little piece out. So, I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer, any, okay. So, okay, Mr. Kuzno?
So are, are we expected to get email comments, or text comments, or written comments into our packet, so we can see them prior to a public meeting where people are invited to come make their comments in person?
That's, that's the hope, that's what we're talking about. I think most times, it's because somebody's not going to be at a meeting that they send an email or otherwise, but...
And if it is, then it's supposed to be, supposed to be read as a, as a, as a comment? Is that what we're talking about?
Not, not necessarily. I know that the, the Board of Trustees just includes the, some correspondence. It's how, it's how we want to run our meeting. I mean, personally, myself, maybe one person's opinion on a topic, as long as we all receive it, is the main concern. Now, if I, if I was to just receive it, or an individual, planning commissioner, or someone else in the administration, receive a comment, and not all of us get it, I don't think that's doing anybody a, a good service, for us to, to continue, or to, you know, to make a decision on something with just a few of us knowing about a citizen's comment, or whatever it may be. So I guess my, what I was looking for was to let the public know, let Ms. Byrd know. We would, we would prefer to get things by the end of business day, Monday, prior to the meeting, so that all commissioners can have it at the same time, and that we could kind of set that standard and, and move forward from here with that.
Yeah. I am in agreement that there should be some cutoff, but we got, I think we got to understand what, what kind of weight is given to those comments that are coming through. They're just, they're just open, white comments, correct, basically? Same thing? It's no, no different than someone's coming up before us?
Yeah.
You, you mean as, as a call to the public?
Yeah, it's kind of like that, or if it's a specific item, that's on the agenda, or something like that. It, it doesn't carry any extra weight by any...
No.
Okay.
No. But, and then again, we do include correspondence that may be more, you know, unofficial, like, maybe it's a notice from a nearby community that they're planting, you know, ready to plant, I think Hamburg sent, one in the recent past.
Or the road commissioner, or the drain commissioner, or something like that.
Correct. If, if, you know, those are, those would be different. I mean, if they're included in the packet, everyone would have the chance to view them. I don't know if it's necessary that we actually read the correspondence at a meeting. It would, it would depend, I guess.
Okay.
Ms. Chick?
I think the weight of the comment from the resident is dependent on, personally, by the, each commissioner, because they could, they could bring up a point that we're not aware of, or that we had, you know, we hadn't thought of, or, or that's important to consider. So I think it, it does have weight for each of us, and it does weigh into our decision.
Certainly. Mr. Iquenno?
Were you looking for a motion, or just to make a policy?
No, I think, well, it's, it's how the planning, it's a, it can even be part of, it's just how we, we're going to run our meeting, so I just wanted to discuss that, get an understanding. Hopefully, everyone that sees the meeting or hears it can understand that, you know, there's a, some of us are at a disadvantage. It's, this isn't our full-time job. Many of us have professions and family and many things happening, so we try to do the best we can and to hear everybody's opinion, and I just want to make it clear that, that's how the commission's going to proceed.
Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer?
I think a lot of people feel uncomfortable about coming to the podium and speaking, and especially now that email is so easy. It's, you know, encourages people to send in their comments because it's so convenient. So I think we can expect more comments by email, and, you know, I would agree that getting those circulated, if anyone gets one, whether it be the township, the commissioner, getting those circulated ahead of time as best we can, can be nothing but helpful and fair to everyone else.
Correct. So, thank you. If that helps, Ms. Byrd, I think that's how we'll proceed, or try to. Thank you. Okay, everyone received minutes from May 16th.
I'd like to make a motion with dispensment of reading of the minutes from May 16th from the planning commission.
I support. Whoop. Mr. Zarzaki supports. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Final call to the public. Anyone wishing to address the planning commission? Please state your name and address for the record.
Jack Seacrest, I live, I live on Nala Road. I'm a member of the library board. The board's very enthusiastic about the Snooku Village, and we think that it will enhance what the library can offer. It'll be good for the community. We appreciate the input on the site plan, and thank you for your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Gordon, 5558 Helena Road. How you doing? I just had a fast question about this last subject that you were dealing with here. Are you saying that if you get some communication that comes in after Monday evening, that you're not going to communicate it to each other as a commission? I mean, what if some applicant sends something in that has something on the agenda for Wednesday meeting?
I don't know, well, I can, I'll address that on my response to the...
That was just a question. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, see, and then we'll go to comments from the commissioners. No, it's not, it's not my intent to limit or otherwise. Especially, if it's an applicant, obviously, they're going to have their, they should have their information prior to the dispense of the packet to the planning commission. And just as tonight, typically, if there are additions, it will be discussed openly as part of the meeting with the, either the, the planning consultant or the engineering consultant present. So, and as I said, there's no intent to slow down or hinder their, anyone's applicant's process by any, by any means. I'm simply referring to any comments by the public. If, if you don't have them by the end of business Monday, they may not reach all the planning commissioners tech, officially, and therefore, if the whole planning commission doesn't receive the comment, then I don't think it's fair to, to use it to weigh a decision. But I think in most important instances, that people do have their information provided to us, one way or the other, usually by the time the packet comes out. So, if that helps. My other, only other comment is, I guess I would like to reinstate the Bark Park language or discussion on old business for the next meeting. Any other, we'll start it. Mr. Dwyer?
Nothing.
Nothing? Mr. Zarzaki?
The only thing I have is a reminder that Saturday is the Washington County Cleanup Day here, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Rainer Schenning.
Yeah, it's...
Rainer Schenning.
Yeah.
To dispose of hatters, household materials, appliances, bulk items, electronics, tires, destruction, demolition equipment, anything to help clean up our township that is beneficial.
Or your house.
Thank you. Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I don't want to crush you, Mr. Lippens, but with the Bark Park regulations, if it's possible to have something for the planning commission at the next meeting, I think if you can just present something to us, and we can look through it and review it and discuss it, and at some point, get it to the board, I think the manager can work out the enforcement part of it after the fact. It doesn't have to be part of what the regulations and rules, is my thought. And I'll talk to him, too, so...
I'm, I'm sure he wouldn't object to me putting something together. I thought my first step was to talk to him, and I was reporting back on that, but happy to have it added back on the agenda. Mention it to him and get something in your packet.
Good, thank you.
It's a fair request.
Mr. Iquenno?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Kuzno?
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to announce the next regular meeting to be June 20th, 2018, for the next planning commission... to be June 20th, 2018 for the next Planning Commission. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Iquinto, support by Ms. Chick. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.